Yeah.
I mean, the buildings are so much lower than the road.
Yeah.
Other side of the road?
Yeah.
So, you want to...
Oh. So, there wasn't a floor on your road?
So much building.
Come on, it's part of the shore. You know, it's expensive. That's what I'm worried about, the price now. I think building...
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zone 4 Review Meeting, November 11, 2020. We have one scheduled item tonight. I approve a little publication of the girl. Before we get started, I'd like to thank the rise for the budget.
........................
1656 Ridge Road accessory building. Located at 1656 Ridge Road. Advocate Chair's Properties LLC is requesting an area variance to allow a 10-foot rear setback for 50 feet as required for the construction of a 45 by 45-foot accessory storage buildings slash pole barn and a 1.3 acre parcel given SPL number 081.01-1-9. Located in an LC2 low intensity commercial district under section 225-16B subsection C of the code of the town, Bronx Street.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
My name is Anthony Damasol. I'm the manager of Chair's Properties. So, yeah, we're looking to build an accessory building. And the placement that we're requesting is 10 feet off of the rear property line as opposed to the 50-foot town requirement. There's a number of reasons that we're asking for this. If you look at the Google map image with the hash marks on it, it shows the... Because it's on Ridge Road, the property, coming down from the ridge is a drastic slope. And the hash mark, the slope actually ends a little bit further past the hash mark, closer to the first building on the left. So, with the great being like that, it renders a lot of the land on the property useless for many things other than going on. With the slope being like that, there's only so many places you can put day parking or extend the parking lot. And as far south as the parking lot is now, is pretty much the maximum distance you could make the parking lot without getting into the hill. So, that's one of the major reasons for the request of the setback. So, with the building 10 feet off the property line, the front of it would come, like it's drawn out from the plan, just past the existing building on the right, just past the back about three, four feet, which would allow for day parking in front of the building for potential tenants. Whereas if it was 50 foot off the back property line, I believe the front of the building would be closer to the front of the existing building to the right there. The whole property does continue to drain towards the back into the swell along 104 there. So, it wouldn't interfere with any drainage or runoff or anything like that being put that close to the property or the rear setback. And I think with the front, the front grade weight is, would explain a lot of the reason why they placed existing buildings so far back from Ridge Road. I'm sure if you guys have seen, the largest building there is four feet off the back property line right now. And the other smaller structure is about 26 feet, I believe it is, off the back property line. So, that was another reason for the request of the precedent sort of inset with the existing buildings being so close to the property line right now. So, those are, that's pretty much the main gist of what the reason for the request.
Tony, is there any reason you can't expand the parking? Just the asphalt drive seems pretty flat to the east.
The, my property line isn't much farther off that tree, the large tree. I guess halfway down the property.
The reason I'm asking is you wanted that, the stone parking area is what pushed the proposed building back to the north?
Yes.
And what I was wondering is if you had parking area to the east of the existing asphalt, you might be able to pull that forward a bit?
Yeah, yeah. So, actually, that off the asphalt, I think on the Google map it shows there is some stone parking area right now. But with, even with one vehicle in there to, with multiple tenants using it for storage, even if someone has one or even two vehicles for, just for day parking for while they're there, and they park to the right there, to be able to turn around there is actually tighter than it appears on the map. So, even with pushing it towards the east and being multiple, the possibility of multiple tenants, it tends to get tight pretty quick down there. So, I'd like to, the idea is to keep any day parking right in front of the building so that people don't interfere with each other.
What kind of businesses are that on?
They're mainly storage, cold storage type businesses or businesses, cold storage uses. Yeah.
It looks to me, you don't know how old the original building is, do you? That they don't know the building itself?
Well, I'm not sure exactly because there was a number of additions. The one all the way up front?
The one closest to the expressway.
The one with the gray roof?
Yes.
That, I'm not sure. Does the record show?
I was just, I was guessing that predated the expressway.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite possible.
Yeah, because the way they shot, dropped the right-of-way line to 104 just missed the corner as if, as if, I think the expressway is about 50 years old, that particular piece. Because I remember when I first go by, I was 17 years old. No, 60, so it's 50 years old. So, that's my point of reference. But it looks like they got as close to that building as possible to get the right-of-way.
The original building was built in 1915. 43 by 31 shed was built in 1981.
The 43, who was the last part?
43 by 31 building?
Okay.
Was built in 1981.
Yeah, most of them, the other building, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that one...
And they did lose some property when the expressway went through it because I found older references to larger parks.
So, the 43, the 43 by 31 was built after the expressway was there?
Yeah.
I was looking at the one that was closer. It's only 4.2 feet off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can imagine they would give him a variance for that, four feet off, right?
This meeting is open to the public. I would like to speak for a heads-up application. Does he know or bring it back to the board? Pursuant to New York State Department of Code, I'd like to make a motion for a type two seater. Plonter.
Aye. Well, it's not as tight as the original building that used to be a machine shop, I think, back when you were 17 and going down that freeway at who knows what speed. The property to the east is a storage facility, so it's not going to be imposing on any of the neighbors to have it any closer than 104, the 10 feet. And I can see the need for parking even when I was there. There was a fellow there on the landscape. You know, it was, it was getting a little, okay, we're gonna put my truck with everybody else down there, so.
I have to agree with that. I could see tenants with trailers under fox there.
Yeah.
Moving trailer mounts and putting space for trailer raised, so. When I visited the site, I looked up and down. There's mini storage next door. And other than that, expressways to the north, so there's really no neighbors that this would have happened. And to your point, it's, it takes it off the line more than the other two that's to the west. One thing I noticed on the map, it says 10-foot setback, but it shows it not perpendicular to the property line. You see how you've got that at an angle? So, the way it's drawn, you're probably actually only at eight or nine feet setback. Do you have a map in trouble?
Yeah, the one that I drew the proposed building on?
Yeah, in other words, you have to be perpendicular from the expressway line to the corner of the building at 10 feet.
Yeah.
And there's measures that have a different angle, that's why you just...
Oh, so I, I see what you mean. So, yeah, if you, so you have to measure 90 degrees off the fence as opposed to whatever I am, 45. Right, that's what you're saying.
Big perpendicular to the expressway.
Is that a, that's not a problem?
No, that would actually, I didn't figure that, but that actually allowed me, because I went there and staked it out to see how it would look and map out, that would actually, what you're saying, allow me to bring a culture to the fence when I was measuring.
No, I just want, want to make sure you'll measure an angle to the fence, perpendicular.
Yeah.
Otherwise, maybe that can vary.
Yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah, yep.
Anybody have any thoughts?
I understand the front of the parcel is in essence not, and this may have assigned various to the storage unit next door sometime last year. And the problem was with the steep slope, having the sign where it needed to be, you couldn't see it because it does go down fairly quickly there. So, they're both having the same steep driveway in. I don't know, I recognize the need for parking and yet there were trailers and such when I was visiting. I don't know if you can bring the building in at all or if this is the absolute furthest to, just, we have to weigh it against a set of standards and 10 feet or 50 is required as significant.
Yeah.
But on the same token, there's really no neighbor that's going to see it. The expressway is not going to be playing, so.
Yeah, that was, I mean, taking into account who the back neighbor was, that's sort of why I requested the tenant because going back, I never even knew the building was there before I purchased it. I went, asked every day to go to work. And even going on Ridge Road, it's just, it's like set down and it's so small, you don't even, you don't notice that half the time unless you knew there was a manufacturing company from years ago. And that's, they were, the manufacturing company was operating when I purchased it from them. So, yeah, it's... I just like to, with multiple times, you like to keep them, you like to keep spaces as allocated as possible. So, like, so like you were suggesting, like bump the asphalt to the east more, ideally, I'd like it to be expanded a small amount so that people driving back to the new building don't interfere with their vehicles at all.
I guess what Corinne is asking, is there any room to move that building forward at all?
I mean, there, there's obviously space. It just, it reduces the usability of the property. Any amount that I move it forward, the property behind it is, is pretty much useless, you know? And I also don't want, I also don't want any storage to be behind the building. So, in close, I keep it to the fence and, you know, keep, push back there the way it is now. I don't want, you know, I have to keep the property as clean as possible and as straight as possible. So, it's just, it makes it so, I've had people that are trying to put stuff behind the buildings and I just, you know, I like stuff off the lawn and...
We have to ask you a couple of these questions just to...
Oh, sure, no, yeah, no problem.
... the variance request, you know, and make sure that you, you know, you give us sort of the correct answer for like, you know, was there any thought, is there any reason why you've got a new area to be stoned? Was there any thought to flipping that to the other side? Is there a reason why, you've mentioned a tree on that site before, but we have to ask you this question so that either we can mediate the variance request...
Okay.
... or have reasons for granting.
Okay.
So, did you think or give any thought to putting the building on the other side of the stoned-in area?
So, where, does the new area have to be stoned?
It's to the north now, to the south of that, that section.
So, putting it up here, so are you looking at the...
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the...
Survey? Or you're saying putting it to the right of the asphalt?
To the right of the asphalt, to the, to the south of the stoned-in area?
No.
The reasons I ask that question is that, you know, first of all, the grants request to the back property line would go away. You still have one on the side setback, but if...
Yeah.
Depending on the answer you give us, it may get, you know, possibly easier for us to grant or to grant.
So, if I put it to the south of my hedged, new area to be stoned, that's what you're asking, correct? That would totally eliminate all parking in the, to the property.
Even if you, even if you kept it off the area that's now the kind is asphalt drive?
Yeah, yeah, because there's...
I see the trees, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, there's trees, I like to leave as many trees as possible. And because of the size of the existing building, it's sectioned off into four smaller spaces. So, it's, you know, at any one time, there could be four...
Tenants.
Four tenants with four or eight cars, you know, during the day. And if I put it over there, actually, as is now, and I'm sure you guys saw when you, when you visited the property, any of the parking is on the stoned area. So, the asphalt isn't even used for parking because it's too bad. So, then the proposal of them would sort of eliminate.
If you will, we have the Google map.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
I mean, I can see cars that are parked in the area, but I want to, I want to hear your answer.
Oh, sure, no problem.
Now, when I pulled in there today...
Oh, that's an old picture.
To your phone, I pulled in, up along in between the buildings. Somebody came and pulled in perpendicular, because they parked perpendicular to the structures, I didn't get out.
Yeah.
He had a moved vehicle, so. So, I think I have firsthand experience with how tight the parking lot, it looks bigger on paper than it looks.
Yeah. And I, when I filed the property, I had one car that was parked along the building, which I'd never allowed. And so, just doing a K-turn in the parking lot, I backed into the car trying to turn around. I mean, obviously, I wasn't paying attention, but that's outside of this. I would have, if I, I was trying to be reasonable with the 10-foot setback. I was thinking about going as close as the other one is four foot, but it's just, that seems, like you can't even squeeze through it, so, in a four-foot setback.
The other thing we look for, or we look at setbacks, is can you maintain the building on your property at 10 feet, doesn't it, before we get wrong?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Someone have to stand?
Um, yeah, okay. So, the request is not out of character in the neighborhood, given the fact that 104 was added later and that there are other properties that are, you know, all chalk up lock in that vicinity. It's not out keeping in my mind. I don't see a detriment to the other properties. The only impacted property is the mini storage to the east. Nobody else, because of the smoke and because of the highway, nobody's going to be impacted by this. Benefit's not achievable by any other method. Well, yeah, we've had some discussion that it actually is, but don't know that with the parking the way it is, that that's going to be an easy way. The request is certainly substantial. It's, you know, fifth of what the setback is supposed to be. Adverse physical or environmental impacts, no, I don't see that. The difficulty is self-created simply because of the lay of the land and everything else. I suppose we could make a discussion. The slope is something that isn't self-created, so little room for discussion there. It's not an undesirable change in my mind. It's pretty much in keeping what's been there, so it's been simple for a barrier I would warrant, so. And then the request is not significant. That always seems to be a duplicate number four, so I'll just leave that be.
I'd like to, yeah, that there's an existing structure that's on 4.2 feet from mine, so he's not getting any closer to the property line than what's already existing.
Sure, I'll make a motion to allow a new building at 1656 Ridge Road with a 10-foot rear setback where 50 foot is required pursuant to section code 225-16B subsection 5 subsection C.
Now, should we include the size of the building that's part of it or is that a...
Yes. I think it should be.
Sure.
And by me, there's a couple of other conditions that need to be included. No parking, storage on the north side of the buildings, so it doesn't look so familiar with the neighborhood. It's not in a septic system, so I think it should be inspected and cleaned.
You bring up the question.
It's not on the map or...
Is it septic system where you're going to put the building?
No, no, the septic's on the opposite, on the opposite side of the long building.
Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah. And as of right now, I'm not even sure that it's going to be hooked to the septic, but I don't mind having it inspected. I mean, it was inspected when I purchased it, the building, and it's never, I think it was inspected. It's never used.
From somebody that you could, yeah, that's a team that you have in the section.
Okay, yeah, I'll check my records. It's, there's one bathroom in the property and it's rarely used. I think I went in there yesterday and it was dried out because it's, it's never used.
You know, with multiple times though, to Jeffrey's point, that's a reasonable condition.
Yeah.
If you're adding another building, you're adding more tenants, you might be adding more bathrooms, so let's have that stuff.
Yeah, and that's fine, just so you guys know, that no, only that front building, concrete block has access to the bathroom. Everything else is cold storage and nobody, nobody, because nobody works there, as, you know, it's not used as a, as an open restroom to the tenants. Only the front tenant is allowed to use that. And the other thing, the dimension of the, of the building, as of right now, I shrunk the front of it and made it 50 feet. So, it's 50 feet by 44. If you guys were thinking about nailing down the size of that. When I, well, when I proposed this, you know, I was going back and forth with sizes and to meet the deadlines for appearing at the board and everything.
I would increase the size.
It decreased and increased. Because I have the proposed building 45 by 45 plus or minus, I didn't, I wasn't sure if it needed to be nailed down for this meeting. I thought that...
Only a concern of how it's advertised with Paul.
Okay.
The variance isn't the size, the variance is the size.
Okay.
That's true, and it's de minimis. It's not, it's not a huge substance.
Okay, okay. I thought you, I thought you guys locked it into the size on here, that's all.
I'm not concerned about the size of the building as long as it does contain coverage further than the town, you know?
Okay.
Well, it still needs planning or improvement based on these signs.
Yeah, yep.
So, you have a motion made?
You can make the motion.
I'll second that.
One more, I think I noticed today, under LC2, permitted uses greater than 5,000 square feet, and it can obtain special use for the town board. And the total square footage of this addition is about 6,000 square feet. That's it?
Should be 2,000 square feet, yeah.
No, I'm counting all the buildings.
Oh, you can say this again?
Code requires anything greater than 5,000 square feet to get a special use for the town. So, I can set that up. It's really just confirming on the meeting. It's a good size, but you only use enough 10%. You have 20% block coverage, so I don't think that's a problem.
They come before this for a special use permit?
It's in our code, it's the town board, actually.
You have the square footage?
Says use required a special use permit by the town board pursuant to chapter 228, which is followed. Committed uses greater than 5,000 square feet. Combination of committed uses into larger buildings, provided that they're a particular style of details consistent with the residential nature of the surrounding facilities.
It's just square footage, it's not the number of buildings on there?
No, it's just square footage.
Well, what we can do is, we, this, this quarter grant's greatest is, we did the subject on the one...
Subject to town board, okay, great.
They can send, they can send it back here too, the town board, if the statute is...
So, the statute is permitted regardless of the buildings are existing or not?
It's not clear to me, so I'm going with total.
All right, typical, not total. Because the statute is...
That should be the easiest of the three you had to go with.
It has to be the age of the other buildings, I mean, that's going to be taken into account when, you know, when the code was actually written and enforced.
Then maybe you give a variance for this, I think it's built in, wherever they're lining to the soul.
50 years, right?
Actually, the assessor's records do show each case for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Something that...
Oh, no, I...
It also above board.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, I'll listen to you every second. We'll call roll now with the conditions.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowler?
Aye.
Mr. Dino, aye? Mr. Corrine?
Aye. Okay, now, this is subject to the other reported board approval, Jeff, you said it in the town board, so, subject to you getting the property building and so on. And do you want to do that septic system inspection or...
Provide at least a special report that's less than a year old or you have...
You're in the parking lots, but we don't know what these ones are. You're in the parking lot, right on the building, that's crazy. It's not parking.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Well, being at the Hall of Business, this might be... Thank you very much for watching.
I'll make some motions for proof. Uh, we had Jesus?
Yeah. Those men were praying out of his favor?
Aye. 2516, we're going to do a six, four, two, six, seven, eight, or something. Three board signatures. So, you have the option of comparing the four to the board members. But they have both the same as others. So, if you'd like to, you know, take a look at the model team, you can easily have two or two seat. Because, now, so, so, so.
If it was a street, if it was, if it was named, it's not going to come back in.
No, it, it, all the president. Maybe it's, maybe it's. I didn't start out, it works. That's a question.
It's kind of.
I mean, it's hard, it's hard to, to test you. So getting a feel for everything, but I just want, very, 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 but, you were here. I just, I just.